Welcome, everyone. Good to see you all tonight. So, we're honored, we have some special guests in the house tonight. So, we wanted to welcome Cub Scout Pack 890, uh, tonight. And they were organized, uh, had, earlier had a tour of City Hall, or Ms. Amanda Correll organized them tonight, we want to thank Amanda. And, uh, tonight, we have Braxton Tucker, Tucker, Chance Townsend, Malo Herrera, Nolan Kimball, Charlie Jacoby, Blake Head, and Gaines Carson with us tonight. And they're going to come forward and, uh, if you'll stand and join us as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, young man. It's a pleasure to have you here. Ms. Wilson?
Please pray, pray with me. Gracious Holy Father, we're so grateful for your unending grace and goodness. We're reminded often that nothing we do or say, however well-intentioned, can match your gifts of forgiveness and salvation. As we enter this advent season of preparation for your coming, Lord, open our minds to the suffering around us. Give us the patience and kindness we need to bless those around us with the love that comes from your sacrifice. Enable each of us to become what you would have us to be. In the name of the child given to us, we pray. Amen.
I'd like to call our December 1st, 2022 council meeting to order. I'd like to ask the consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Do we have any additions, changes, revisions?
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion approve in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Begin tonight, we have, um, three public hearings before we enter into our business meeting. And, uh, I will have our city manager, uh, read the process and rules for our public hearings before we begin, so everyone's acquainted with those.
Good evening. Thank you for attending our, uh, City of Canton Public Hearing tonight. We have three cases. These hearings are recorded verbatim and become part of a legal record of the cases being discussed. As such, you're required to sign up and fill out an affidavit to speak during the public hearing process. The public hearing was advertised in the legal organ, notice to neighboring property owners under the Development Code via mail, and notice to the public at large via yellow public notice signs at the property or properties that are part of the case. The hearing will begin with the declaration of the mayor to open the public hearing, including case number, description of the case, and summary by our staff. Those wishing to speak in favor of the applicant, including the applicant, will be given the first opportunity to speak. They will have 10 minutes in total to speak on behalf of their position. Those in opposition will then be given a total of 10 minutes to speak on behalf of their position. Those in support may reserve time to rebut or comment on any opposition statement. Once all parties have spoken, or the total time for each side has expired, the mayor will close the public hearing. At that time, the city council will be free to discuss the case and question staff about the case. In the interest of all parties and to give fairness to both sides, there will be a timekeeper. I will keep the time for us, for each side. As there may be several speakers, we ask that you keep your comments concise and try not to duplicate the comments of other speakers. Please give your name and address for the record before you start your comments. Please address your comments to the city council. The audience is asked to maintain decorum, and cheering, talking, jeering, and clapping during the public hearing process is not appropriate. Those that cannot adhere to the guideline may be called out of order by the mayor or escorted from the building. The hearing process is a monologue. Council will address the comments after the hearing is closed during their discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So, we'll begin with, um, Public Hearing A. Public Hearing and Discussion of Case ZCA 2210-004, Request to amend the current condition, zoning conditions for 39.98 acres of the Park Village Development. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. As you stated, this is a zoning condition amendment application for the Park Village Development. This is originally part of Pod J, which was shown to be single-family detached homes. Cherokee County purchased this property back around 2008 and has held on it since then. The Development Authority is looking to add to the conditions that would allow for corporate office space and light industrial uses on this 39.99 acres. Mr. Heath Tippins is here tonight representing the applicant. I'll be answer, glad to answer any questions that you may have of staff that I'm capable to. If not, I will get the answers for you.
Okay. Take my screen. At this point, we will open up the public hearing and ask the applicant to present the application and...
Good evening, Mayor and council. How are y'all?
Good thanks. How are you?
Good, good. Thank y'all so much for your consideration of this case tonight. We just appreciate y'all's service. And if we could, is there a way to get it up on the screen, sir?
Heath, if you'll just give your name and address.
Thank you. Heath Tippins, I'm Vice President with the Cherokee Office of Economic Development. I'm representing the applicant, being the Development Authority. My address is 1687 Lower Burris Road, Canton, Georgia, 30114. I'll be very brief in my opening comments. Just wanted to point out, this is our site plan. You'll notice that there are not any buildings noted on it. Just because it's purely conceptual at this point, uh, we will, the, the end product that we've put in place, uh, will be market-driven. But I will also say that, uh, when we develop out property, just like with Canton Corporate Park, uh, we work to recruit the companies that match the needs of the community. We could have sold that property 20 times older or over, uh, for speculative development, and that's not what we want to do. We want to make sure that we're recruiting something that will match the needs of the community. If you look on the, the power easement that runs kind of through the top half of it, there's a little bit of section on the, uh, the northeastern side of the site that backs up to, uh, closer to the neighborhood. I will point out that there probably will not be anything on that other than, I mean, you, you, it's not large enough to place a building. And with the, uh, with the power easement running through there, you could only really put probably parking under that. So, just wanted to point that out. Also, will be access from either the new Technology Ridge Parkway or come in from the west off Bluffs Court. So, there will not be any access into that development, uh, from the Park Village, uh, development. Also, pulled this up just to overlay the boundaries of the site to show, uh, just proximity to, on the west, we've got some corporate, uh, buildings off Bluffs Court, uh, to the east, obviously, Park Village. And to the north, I know y'all had recently, um, approved a zoning condition amendment for the B&amp;B, uh, real estate, uh, development. That is all. I'll reserve any remaining time for rebuttal. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I believe we have two, um, assistants signed up to speak. I don't know if either of those are in support. Okay. This time, we'll ask, uh, those in opposition. And we'll begin with, uh, Ada Solomon.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I just received a letter this morning about this, so this is all new to me.
Ma'am, will you give us your name and address?
It is Ada Robin Solomon and me and my husband on property 125 and 127 Park Village Drive. They are, uh, investment properties that we purchased about seven years ago, going on seven years ago for our family. And we just received these letters, um, actually, it was sent out on the 28th. And there were supposed to be two meetings, but they've canceled one. So, um, as an investor and property owner, um, Dad's set against this because it is in a community where children play. And he's saying that it's, doesn't affect the subdivision, but it literally just backs right up to it. When you go up into the, or right there where the clubhouse is, you make a left and it's right there. So, there's children, this is a community, and they're building subdivisions all around it. So, why would we want to put an office complex where children ride their bikes and everything else? So, I, I'm, I'm like stunned by this whole thing because I've just found out about it today. So, I object to it, me and Terry Solomon, my husband, he's here as well. And I'm sure there's other here, as far as, um, you know, no, I don't know. But I do know that this project is not good for the community. It's not good for the value of our homes. And again, this is for families, not for commercial offices. They are building new subdivision right to the backside. But again, that's for children and clubhouse and park, not for an office. Any kind of complex, that's just going to bring in strangers to our area. It's not safe these days for children. There, our subdivision is very, very particular. You don't even get a weed out of place without getting fined. Why would we want this joined right up, literally to our home? My homes are like right across the street. That's how close they are to where this complex is going to be. And again, he puts on here, a blank little square does not show where anything is going to be. And it might be, is what he just said. I don't want mights. I need to know what it is. Again, this is our biggest investment. And we, this is our retirement investment. We want to know what their plan is. They shouldn't be passing something, and they might put something in, or it might affect us. They're not showing where they're putting anything. They just got us a big old square there, is what I just seen, first time I've seen this. So, that's all I have to say, and I'm praying there's someone else here to speak against it. So, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Ms. Kathy Johns?
Hello, Mayor and council. I'm Kathy Johns at 513 Wildflower Circle in Park Village. And if I may, I hope I'm not out of line, but I would first like to congratulate Mr. Councilman Carlin on his recent marriage. Secondly, on behalf of Park Village, I want to thank you for listening to our previous concerns and accommodating the majority of our requests, um, from the previous adjacent parcel. You made us all feel much more comfortable with the upcoming Becker Project. With regard to this new parcel and zoning requests, we ask that you apply the same requirements with regard to buffers, building setbacks, non-disturbance to our creek and trail, and minimal clearing of trees so as to prevent, um, any view, a view of any of the potential commercial and industrial buildings from our homes. So, basically, everything we asked for last time, we ask that that be applied toward this one as well. A major concern to us now is the impact of having even more traffic on Fate Con Road and the lack of any planned improvements on Fate Con and especially its intersection with Highway 5. It is our understanding that there will only be a two-way stop at our back entrance. And with all of the additional traffic coming down Bluffs Parkway and the traffic circle feeding directly into this stretch of road from the other direction, which will likely be at a faster pace than it is now where there are currently stop signs, it's just going to be very difficult for us to get in and out of the neighborhood. The original plans I was shown, and I realize this is actually county-issue county roads, the original plans I was shown for the intersection included a traffic light. For some reason, that was changed since then to a two-way stop. We ask that the original plans be revisited to include the traffic light or make it a four-way stop to allow us safe ingress and egress from our neighborhood. As I mentioned previously, the traffic at the intersection of Fate Con and Highway 5 is already very difficult. And all of this additional future development will make it exponentially worse. There are currently no plans for any improvements on Fate Con. I did go to the county info meeting, and they have no plans for any improvements. We understand these are county roads, but it is our hope the city can have some influence on the county, making these much-needed improvements before it becomes unmanageable. Again, thank you kindly for hearing our concerns and addressing them to the best of your ability.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up to speak. Leave time for Mr. Tippins for rebuttal. How much time do you have?
He has eight minutes and 10 seconds.
Okay.
Eight minutes and 10 seconds.
Thank y'all so much. Uh, first, I wanted to address Ms. Solomon's comments. Uh, thank you for those, uh, obviously. First off, as, as being property values and investment property, uh, we found that the other, uh, corporate parks that we've developed, the property values have actually went up, uh, surrounding those. With regards to the clarification letters, we actually sent out our first letter, I believe it was on the 11th, uh, of November. And we, we followed up with an additional letter because in the first letter, uh, it referenced that there was two public hearings. We wanted to make sure that everyone was aware it was just one. So, we did a follow-up clarification letter, uh, to note that it was just, in fact, one public hearing. And the zoning packet that was online, it referenced there would be two. And so, that's why we had sent out that letter, uh, with two public hearings. So, apologies on that. Um, and then also, as far as the, the buffers, uh, a- as it relates to our development, we feel like there's adequate natural buffering, uh, on the eastern side of the, the site. Uh, and then, as far as the examples of what we hope to recruit, I know that y'all have seen the renderings, uh, for Canton Corporate Park. It would be something probably in keeping with that, uh, or even smaller than that, uh, like you, you see off Bluffs Court, um, and something that, that would match also, uh, what you see to the north or what y'all had come before you as far as the B&amp;B real estate development. Also, uh, as far as traffic goes, uh, we, we work to recruit industries, again, that match the needs of the community. We're not going to large distribution center. Uh, and, and a lot of our developments, we don't see a lot of truck traffic specifically. Uh, a lot of the, the prospects that we've actually been in speaking with lately, I mean, they have one to two trucks per week, a- at the max. Um, as, in relation to Ms. John's comments on, uh, the improvements, I know that was brought up during our public input meeting. We had four, uh, people attend that just recently. But, uh, that was brought up, and we did reach out to the county to ask for those plans and then shared, uh, those plans with the, uh, the four attendees, uh, that attended that meeting. And then, we can't really speak for the county as far as what, what their, if there was any amendments or changes to that. But, um, I, I know that this being of, of record, that would be up to the county on, on whether or not they would probably make any amendments to, to those plans. And, uh, that is, that is all I have. I will say, when we, uh, work to recruit industry and, and business and companies to the area, uh, it helps diversify, uh, the tax digest, uh, takes the burden off the residents, uh, creates capital investment. So, we appreciate y'all's consideration of this case. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Tippins. At this point, we will close the public hearing and open up for council discussion. Any questions for Mr. Green? Ms. Smith?
Um, can we also get the, um, county road plans for the area that Mr. Tippins is requesting?
Ms. Wilson?
Uh, if we get the county road plans, it probably will answer this question. I noticed that, uh, Ms. John's mentioned, uh, a four-way stop instead of a two-way stop. Is that, will that be addressed?
Those should be shown in, uh, the county plans. I will reach out to the county engineer to, to obtain those.
Mr. Carl? And Mr. Green, can you speak as to the buffer question? Are there any variations that are being requested? What kind of buffer there will be between this property and the surrounding properties?
This property was part of the original Park Village subdivision. So, there were not any code-required buffers because it was all a one-development. Typical buffer would be if the Park Village residential area was zoned as a residential designation and the area that's in question. Now, there would be a 50-foot buffer from the property line. And I will go back through and get the conditions that was approved for Becker for your consideration prior to the action meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Green, do you know what the topographical, uh, terrain is like on the residential side? And Mr. Ingram, can you put the map up, please? With the, uh, the, that one? No, the green one. Thank you.
On the residential side, it, it's fairly flat. It's, you know, been graded out, uh, for several years now for the home sites.
Um, what is that beige-gray line at the top there? Is it a road or is it power lines?
Is it there, you're right there?
Yes.
Uh, that's a power line easement. There are power lines there.
So, the, uh, the terrain is fairly level. And, um, will there be a master plan for this development being brought forward to council to be approved?
They have not provided one yet.
Right.
That could possibly be a condition that any future site plan be submitted to the council for approval.
And I'm curious, um, to, since I believe Mr. Tippins said it would be difficult to put anything on that sliver of land, maybe parking lot. But I, I'm wondering if they might be willing to, um, make a dog park or a playground or something a- out of that instead of using it for their business purpose?
I'm sure Mr. Tippins, uh, can provide that answer, you know, subsequent to the action meeting.
Right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Taylor?
Mr. Green, could you find out, um, Mr. Tippins mentioned that, um, there were certain types of businesses that they wanted to attract? I'd be curious, and I, I realize he didn't bring his crystal ball with him tonight, but what types of business, businesses they would typically be most interested in in leasing, uh, or, or doing a deal with this property? And then, as importantly, are there specific types of businesses that they would exclude from this property? And that's all I have.
Ms. Smith?
And Mr. Green, if you could resend, um, we've talked about this with all of their properties that co-ed has wanted to, um, do this with. But could you resend their, the sample covenants that usually run with these kinds of office parks? Just for council to have before the next meeting?
For this particular part?
For like Canton Corporate Park and the other ones, they all have covenants.
Right. I'll, I'll get a copy of that from Mr. Tippins.
Perfect. Thank you.
Initial questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. We'll move on to item B. Public Hearing and Discussion of Cases RZ 0N 220N-006 and CUP 220N-007, Request to rezone and obtain a conditional use approval for 710 Marietta Road, 1250 and 70 Marietta Circle. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you stated, this is a rezoning request and a conditional use permit request for the properties that you mentioned. The applicant is seeking the rezoning to accommodate 24 additional leaving units. They will be comprised of, I believe it's five quadplexes, three single-family homes, one of which will be, uh, turned into a duplex unit. They're also requesting two variances with the application. One is an increase in the parking ratio, and the second one is a reduction in some required buffers that is due to the new zoning category that is requested. It's been noted that there will be no construction in these areas. It's just a result of the abutting zoning districts. The original map, or site plan that was submitted, indicated a through-street for Marietta Circle. The applicant was not sure how many entryways that he needed to provide for a residential area as he has attended other meetings here where at least two were required for 125 leaving units or more. In a meeting, in his community input meeting, he has revised his site plan to close off Marietta Circle. And the only house under his development that will have access to that will be 12 Marietta Circle. There are some other concerns, uh, that have been raised by some of the residents. I'm sure that they will address those here tonight during the public hearing. If there's anything that can be answered once that is closed, I'll be glad to answer those for you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. So, we will open the public hearing. And again, those, um, comments in support, um, with the applicant?
Good evening. Melissa Castile with Mondel Land Planning and Design. I'm here as representative of Latimer Apartments. And Mr. Wes Latimer, who's also here. Um, I reside at 8020 Main Street in Woodstock, Georgia. And thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you. We do have a presentation that I'll be speaking to. The, the projects that Mr. Green has, um, mentioned to you are located, it is located in the Sunnyside District, which there has been a, an initiative project ongoing. Well, actually, most recently, I think, had public initiatives for in 2020 that, um, targets improvements and initiatives for, um, various items like transportation improvements, affordable housing initiatives, uh, public events for cultural, um, integration and diversity and so forth for the Sunnyside District. And Mr. Latimer and his, um, company, Latimer Apartments, have been stakeholders in that area for over 20 years. Mr. Latimer's, was involved with the public initiative meetings for those, that project. And just to introduce the project to you a little bit more. The project proposes to combine three, four parcels. There is Phase 1, as you can see on the image here, that's located along Marietta Road. And Phase 2 proposes to add 1250 and 70 Marietta Circle to the rear, which you can also see there. This is going to be a total of 6.5 acres. Um, the units on the site currently in Phase 1, there's 25 units. There's three existing single-family homes in Phase 2. So, the proposal is to add 21 total new units. Under the current zoning, there can be a total of 39 units. So, the request is only to add 10 additional units overall for a total of 49. This, um, outlines those, the combination of the four parcels. If you go to the next one, um, this shows you Phase 1, which again is accessed off of Marietta Road. The next one shows you 12 Marietta Circle. The home there, if you see in the next page, um, is a 1935-built home. It'll be renovated and will continue to be a single-family home. And it will be the only home, or the only unit. And it will be the only home, or the only unit total existing of this project. It will be proposed to be accessed by Marietta Circle after the project's completed. The next slide shows you 50 Marietta Circle. This home was built in 1910, is also proposed to be renovated. And just to, I'm sorry, correct Mr. Green, 12 Marietta Circle will be a single-family unit. Both 50 and 70 Marietta Circle are proposed to become duplexes. So this one will be renovated and one unit will be added to it. The next slide shows you 70 Marietta Circle. And the home there was built in 1960 and again be renovated. This shows you an existing unit in Phase One. It gives you an idea of the architectural standards, which will be applied to the new units. The next slide shows you 600 Marietta Road, which is a recently completed renovation project accessed at the corner of Marietta Road and Marietta Circle. The renovations that Mr. Latimer typically completes on these homes always include the addition of four-sided, a brick, new roofs and gutters, new windows and new landscaping. The interior improvements will vary per home depending on its needs. Mr. Latimer is seeking approval of funding through HUD financing and is the reason why we're requesting conditional use permit for approval of some of these units to become quadruplex units. This does not add any additional units to the request. It just creates a series of four-unit, kind of effectively townhouses type of construction. And these have all been vetted out to be under the threshold of affordable housing and as far as HUD is concerned. In consideration of the fact that Canton's home values have gone up over 22% in the last year and 80% over the last five years, there's a significant need for continued addition of affordable housing, and that is a focus of the Sunnyside Initiative. As you see in our request, if you'll go on to this slide here, yes. The two highlighted areas are the areas of the property lines on the southern boundary and the northern boundary where because of the request and the zoning change, as Mr. Green stated, it enforces some buffers. On the north side, this would be type B buffer, which is 50 feet. And on the south side is type A, which is 25 feet. For the most part, except for about 55 feet where on the northern side, the new phase will be adjacent to an ORT zoning. Everything else is existing conditions, and there's not going to be proposed any changes to those areas. And actually, some of those areas are infilled with buffer plantings already. The next slide shows you an approximate type of look that those buffers currently have. And where there would be a small section against Phase Two, we'd be looking to infill with a complete buffer that also meets the new standards that are going to be coming online for native plantings and that in the city's plant palette. This is the updated site plan, just to walk you through it. Can I have a pointer on it while? Doesn't show up very well, okay. All right, so if you look to the west of units 10 through 13, this is the area where Marietta Circle currently comes through into the three single-family parcels. The proposal is to cut that off there where it accesses the last driveway that's not owned by Mr. Latimer on the west side of Marietta Circle. A privacy fence would be extended along that area and turned back so that it would also help screen out units 10 through 13. Additionally, buffer plantings would be added either in front of or behind that fence depending on the layout of the property. Also, to clarify, the intent of the construction traffic is intended to be fully brought through Phase One to complete Phase Two. The only renovation work that would be accessed off of Marietta Circle would be for Unit Nine, and that unit currently has a very substantial long driveway and parking area that all of that traffic could be committed to be retained or parked on property and not on Marietta Circle. Certain amenities that we'll be looking at internal to the site are extending the sidewalk network from Phase Two through Phase One so that pedestrians, schoolchildren, what have you, can walk out to the bus stops or transit stop that's going to be installed a block or so south of this property and also hit the sidewalk network to go up into town, which we understand is going to be coming online with some new projects, the master transportation plan that's coming. So that would be a great benefit. There's also going to be, there's already a large green space between the units that face Marietta Road, but a second green space will be dedicated between units 24 and 15 and 14, central to Phase Two. Phase Two will also be internally fire-accessible. Another item that's going to be added to Phase Two units, which we expect unless there's issues with impervious surface locations, was to be add a six-by-eight storage unit would be integrated into the architecture for each unit so that they'd have additional storage capacity for personal items, household items, and so forth. Likewise, Mr. Latimer is committed to establish and already has established a management team who will be monitoring this project going forward. And he has a lead on that as long as, along with an assigned crew. They'll be monitoring for trash management, maintenance of the detention pond, maintenance of landscaping around the site, and other factors. All right, that is it in summary. I will reserve time for questions. Thank you. I apologize for all my papers.
Did have some other residents sign up. My understanding to speak in support. If did not sign up to speak in support, let me know when I call your name. But Alejandro Langorin, is that in support? Opposed, okay. Bobby Barnett, support? Okay, come forward, please. Do we have any time left for support?
Forty-five seconds.
Forty-five seconds, okay. We have, okay.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and add five minutes to both sides.
Okay. Motion to extend both sides by five minutes to the second. All papers, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Go ahead, we have five minutes total for you and anyone else who wants to speak.
My name is Bobby Barnett, and I live at 230 Meridian Street, which is really a street over from Mr. Latimer's project. First off, I want to start by saying that I've known Mr. Latimer for over 20 years, and he's a man of his word. He's a man of integrity. And I've seen some of these, the housing that he has constructed through the years, and it's constructed very well. And it's really low-maintenance housing. It's all brick. And he also supplies these housings with dumpsters instead of trash cans. And his trash is picked up three times a week. So there's not a chance for a lot of trash buildup. A lot of the houses around the Sunnyside area, I'm sure you're familiar, were built in the 1920s as meal houses. So a lot of them are, excuse me, a lot of them are in really bad shape. And some of them need total renovation, some demolition. So with this said, we know that there are a lot of people moving to our, to our area here in Canton. So these people need affordable housing that they can, housing that they can afford and that is clean and well-constructed. And I feel like these, this project that Mr. Latimer will supply this to the people as they need it. And overall, I feel that it's a win for the Canton-Sunnyside area to have this project go through. And we have, as you know, like I said, a lot of people moving to this area. And I feel that it's a justice, excuse me, to supply them with the housing that they need, affordable housing. And so this is the reason I stand in full support of Mr. Latimer's project.
Thank you, sir. Lilybeth Gallegos, is that in support?
Hi, my name is Lilybeth Gallegos. I live at 718 Marietta Road, Canton, Georgia 30114. I support this project, new project, because we need more affordable housing around us. And we, I have been attendant for Mr. Latimer more than 12 years. And I've never had an issue with any problem that he needs to fix. He goes and fixes it. And we haven't, our appliance or anything, he goes and we just tell him and he needs, right away. He's there. I really like, our neighborhood is very close to the stores we visit. Everyone, everyone in my development is very friendly, and there's very little or no crime in this area. I would like to see this project approved because I always have family and friends of mine that are always looking for rent, more houses in the area.
Thank you. Ulysses Candell, is that in support?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry, your last name, I cannot quite read that, so you can pronounce it for me.
Sorry. My name is Ulysses Cordova. Been living on 720 Marietta Road for like over 14 years. And I'm coming on support of the new project. I can tell he's been a good man on all the renting. He's, you got any issues or whatever? He always been on time fixing stuff inside the apartments. And it's been a good environment for the kids. Lot of people don't like the road, but inside he's always been keeping clean and it's a safe place for anybody can live. And the other thing is, he's been a good for no discrimination for people. Anybody can come and rent for him. And that's all I can say. And I would like to see if this new project get approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who signed up, want to speak in support of the project? Okay. So now those in opposition, Mr. Alejandro Langorin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Alejandra Langoren, and I live on 178 Edward Street. The reason I'm opposing is because I feel that, you know, with the new buildings, they will bring more, more people over and more crime to the area. Also, another of the questions that I have is how, how are you going to address the future state of traffic? And how is Marietta Road going to handle the peak hour of traffic without creating traffic congestion? Also, another question that I have is like, what plans do they have for school transportation? Right now, just in that area, out of the apartments, there's like three buses that are just assigned to that area. Just out of one, it's like over 30 kids that, just for one bus, that I see. And there's also the sewer network in our area. You know, it was designed many years ago. How are they going to improve that? If there's any upgrading of the sewer lines? And if they're going to build more apartments, how, is it going to bring the property value down? Or what are your thoughts on that? If it's going to increase the value or actually decrease the value of the houses in the surrounding areas? Also, for that area, we have a lot of families that they, they have like small children and they're always like walking to the businesses nearby. Are you, are your plans to be any like sidewalks or anything that improves the walkability in our area? Will there be any office for those apartment complexes where they can go in to put any complaints? Because I've been talking to neighbors in the copper mine neighborhood, and they said that they love music, it plays all day. And then they also have like the trash, but there's not an office where they can go and complain. And they don't feel like they can call, you know, like the, if it's something minor like that, call the cops or anybody else if there's going to be an office where they can go and complain. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Woodard?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Susan Woodard, and I live at 610 Marietta Road. I am requesting denial of the new phase and rezoning completely. Currently, our address is Marietta Road, but we access our house on Marietta Circle. We are the driveway that Melissa proposed they close off with a fence. We would like to see a more permanent structure such as a stone wall because the fence that separates our house from Phase One apartments up until two days ago, for the last eight years, has not been maintained. My husband and I are the ones that have either screwed boards back in that have come out. He's gone on the other side of the fence to cut down vines that were coming over from the retention pond that was not maintained. So we would like to see a more permanent structure. There's also an area in Phase One where 70 Marietta Circle house sits, and they have removed four of the boards from the fence there so that they can cut through to the apartments. So we feel like if only a fence and trees are planted, it's not permanent enough to where it can't be modified at some point. Also, regular maintenance of landscaping and monitoring of trash disposal. My husband and I have had to call code compliance several times for trash buildup on the backside of the fence to the point that it was pushing the fence over. We would also request possible relocation of the school bus stop at the end of Marietta Circle. There are not, it is a one-lane road. If you're not familiar with the area, I would encourage you all to come look at it before you make your decision whether to approve or denial this, this project. The one-lane road is how we come in and we come out. There are elementary children with their little flashlights in the morning that walk down to the bus stop. And of course, we're leaving and for work in the morning. It's not safe for them to stand at the end of Marietta Circle to catch the bus. Some of the questions I have is, where's the runoff from the new, new phase going to go? How quickly can we expect repairs to Marietta Circle after construction is complete? Where is construction traffic going to enter the property once construction begins? Is it going to be accessed through Marietta Circle? Or are they going to come in through the apartments? Can the new sewer system that Mr. Latimer just put in handle the new phase? We did have a problem with raw sewage leaking and running down our driveway on two different occasions. You can only imagine how it is coming out of your house in the morning to that. It's not very pleasant. Basically, at this point in time, with the housing that currently exists and civil engineering and traffic studies, that we have about 88 trips per day. That's based on 10 trips per day per single-family home, seven trips per day per apartments, duplexes and condos. So that would increase with the new project from 88 trips a day to 235 trips per day. That's a substantial increase. You're talking an additional 65 vehicles that would be introduced to the area. We are not opposed to affordable housing. That's one of the reasons my husband and I moved to the area. However, in reading the Thomas P. Miller Housing Study, it did point out five different locations within Sunnyside. And Marietta Circle was not one of them. In closing, again, I would strongly encourage you to come and view it. It's, it's very different when you come and view the area as opposed to looking at a site plan on a piece of paper. And I will also quote Mayor Grant from his State of the City address that was given February of this year, that all residents deserve quality housing that reflect our community character through thoughtful design and responsible development practices. We strongly believe that this is not best for our area and we hope that you will consider denying it. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas Weaver?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. I won't belabor the point that the other two speakers, uh, shared with you regarding their respectful opposition to the proposal for this development. Indeed, whenever any developer or anyone for that matter is willing to invest in our community, it's a force for good. And it's not, certainly not indictment against Mondo LLC or Mr. Latimer personally. It's just an approbation of her remarks, which I believe Mayor Grant's comments during the State of the State City reflect adopted roadmap, that safe, responsible development is the goal, not just unfettered, unchecked growth that win, or whimsy. Which indeed was the very catalyst upon which council voted during the last council meeting to adopt the administration's request for an abeyance, a full one-year abeyance from continuing to accept any further residential applications because this has certainly gotten out of control. Uh, I know that this slipped just under the, uh, that, that choke point there, that cutoff date, that this was already in the works. But, uh, I think that council would be wise, council indeed would be counted wise to, to, uh, maybe slow down on this. And, and, and slow down is, is, uh, very important indeed because this development actually along Marietta Road, I think I've told council this before, that road itself is a blind drive. I think I've shared that with you many times. I'll share it with you again and, and for everyone to hear, it's a blind drive and, uh, it's just not safe. But I'm not gonna belabor the point from the other two speakers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Ms. Weaver? That is all we have signed up to speak. Um, so I guess we have much time we have reserved for the applicant?
Minute thirty.
A minute and thirty seconds. Would the applicant like to rebut?
That's what they had to do it.
One minute and thirty seconds total.
I'm sorry. I'll try to quickly address as many of those items as possible. Um, as far as bringing more people and crime to the area, I know that, um, we've checked into the crime rates and actually they've reduced in that area lately. So that's continued to be a safe, um, area. So I'm not, can't really speak to the specifics of the crime concerns aside from that. Um, as far as traffic, that, that's definitely a point that came up in the public input meeting. And, um, I know that, as I mentioned, that there's a master plan for transportation in the Sunnyside area coming on very soon. And we understand that that's gonna include, I believe it was replacement of the bridge, um, at the creek, which is supposed to provide more pedestrian access. Gosh, I can't remember all the projects, but I know they're intended to provide increased transportation safety and opportunities in that area. So, um, this is gonna be in addition of the, like as Ms. Woodard mentioned, so many cars, um, which is much less even under the threshold of requiring a transportation study or, or traffic study for the project compared to the apartment complex that was already recently approved down Marietta Road on the other side of the interstate. School transportation, unfortunately, um, it's not under the guise of the capabilities of, of Mr. Latimer or, or his staff to address the changes to the school bus stop system. However, I do know that they monitor that, I don't know how many times a year, but they're always addressing the needs, um, the volume demands and updating their bus stop locations and their capacity based on what's needed for the area. And I know that they would have to review and approve any changes to bus stop locations. And usually they, I think, are the ones picking the bus stop locations out based on the need and safety concerns. So, um, that would some, be something that would have to be forwarded on to them. Uh, let's see. I really can't speak to house values, I'm sorry. I'd have to get some feedback from, uh, maybe a realtor or something of that sort to get that back to you guys.
Time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we will close the public hearing and open up a council discussion and any questions for Mr. Green on this project? Ms. Schmidt?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm just gonna address a few things, uh, and ask some questions based on, um, interactions I've had with residents and, um, meetings we've had with the applicant. I did misspeak to, um, a couple of residents when we were talking about schools and overcrowding. The first thing I wanted to clarify is that Hasty Elementary is not overcrowded according to CCSD. It's only at 82% capacity. But then I wondered, Mr. Peppers, if you could quickly explain, um, sometimes when there's a development, there has to be a, a donation per household. Can you explain how that works and why it doesn't apply this time?
Sure. So, um, developments that are over 25 units are transmitted by local governments to the school district for their review. And this one is under that limit. Additionally, uh, we did, uh, I did reach out to the school district. They confirmed that Hasty Elementary School was at 84% of capacity. They do utilize two mobile units there for some special classes. But even without the mobile units, they were only at 86% capacity of the building.
Thank you. And do you know is that number because with twen- with under 25 units, the population isn't a significant burden on the schools? Is that the?
That's just the threshold that's always been used by cities in the school district for determining whether they would ask for a donation.
Yes, that's correct. Ever since I've been here, uh, anything over 25 residential units has been sent to the school system for their comments on it. And they do typically ask for a, uh, a donation to offset any type of funds unless they maybe, it's a senior community that would not be adding any students to the school system.
And then could we ask the applicant? It seems obvious that if the neighborhood gets closed off at Marietta Circle in the back, where kids from that neighborhood access a bus stop now, that the bus stop would have to change because there would be no way to access the bus stop at the end of Marietta Circle. But if, could we ask the applicant that if the bus stop was to be relocated and if there was a way to build a bus stop shelter and improve the lighting, would the applicant be willing to do so? And then, um, Mr. Peppers, I know I asked, um, you some questions earlier this week about the crime rate in the area. Could you speak to?
Yes, um, let me pull up that specific information. We had the police department go and pull crime data from that particular area. And data was pulled for the last five years. Um, from 2017 to 2020, there were an average of 60 reports per year in the area. 2021, 2022, the average was 40 reports per year from the area. So it had decreased. And then I specifically asked for some information about what types of calls were received in that area. Aside from traffic stops, which would be related to speed or what have you. The call volume was basically broken down, uh, to, uh, 14% domestic disputes, 9% suspicious activities, um, 10% accidents, and then 10% battery. The rest were, um, calls related to traffic.
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Green or Ms. Peppers either, but when are we expecting our transportation master plan results?
There will be a presentation on, uh, January 5th by the master plan consultant. And then council could adopt that as early as January 19th.
Okay. And then can you explain briefly, won't that master plan have many projects? And then counts, mayor and council will have to choose projects. So there's no way to say at this date what projects might be chosen to improve the Marietta Road corridor?
What was asked of the consultant was to do an overall citywide transportation plan. And then within that to assist the city in coming up with priority projects. Um, the master plan also includes projects that are on the books with Department of Transportation on their roads that the city doesn't control. Additionally, there's projects in there that are highlighted as part of Cherokee County's transportation plan, which are also projects that we don't control, but may impact some streets that are fed in to the city. And then there's some projects that are identified in there that are part of Cherokee County's master plan, like Marietta Highway, which was an agreement we had with the county on service delivery strategy that they would take the lead on those projects. Uh, but within the document, there will be specific projects, uh, mapped out. Um, and then there will be recommendations for which of those projects could be achieved in the short.
And is it possible that those projects would also include walkability or is it only vehicles?
No, it's, it's both. Um, I don't, I don't have the draft in front of me, but I think there were three specific areas that were targeted by the stakeholder committee. One involved, uh, uh, walkability, trail connectivity, things like that. Another one was about safety and another one was about capacity.
Thank you. Um, sorry, I'm full of questions. Could you guys address, um, how sewer and stormwater runoff will, are proposed to be handled for this project? And, um, also, I guess along with that, the current retention pond and a new retention pond and how that might work and what the requirements are for maintenance?
And speaking with the applicant over the last couple of days, uh, the subject of a detention did come up. They are looking at the possibility of doing underground detention with no additional, uh, detention ponds. There was an issue with the sewer lift station due to the pump station that was in operation getting clogged up with grease. Since Mr. Latimer's purchase of the lots that's in question tonight, he has run a septic line down to the sewer line that runs alongside of the creek. So that should not be an issue. In speaking with Mr. Hartavian earlier today, the increased number of, of residents will have a very minimal impact on the sewer capacity. In fact, he said, right now, we do not have an issue of sewer capacity. Uh, Mr. Latimer's project probably will not come online until sometime 2024, 2025. We are expecting the treatment center to be up and operational with the additional treatment capacity late summer, uh, 2023, maybe even fall of 2023. So he's a long way out from having any impact at all on the system.
Thank you. Um, and then just to reiterate what the applicant, um, spoke about earlier, there is a property management lead and a property management crew on the site now.
Yes, ma'am. That's, uh, Mr. Latimer has, uh, recently employed the services of a property management, uh, firm. And he has stated that they will be out there maintaining, patrolling, keeping the site, uh, in tip-top shape.
And then if there are problems, I believe the applicant, um, offered to share the contact information of his property manager. And, um, also if we can make sure that the residents who spoke earlier know how to get in touch with code enforcement here at the city. And then I was wondering, um, I know, uh, we've talked about, and it came up tonight, that some of the fencing out there has been repaired. I was curious if the fence at, behind or near 70 Marietta Circle that people are using to walk through, if that specific area has been repaired yet or not?
I will find out.
Thank you. Um, and then I guess I just wanted to mention, I don't think they're this far along, but there are some very old trees back in this area. If the project were to be approved, it's very much park-like. And I know they're talking about adding or keeping a green space. I just wondered if, um, we could talk about conditions or more firm plans of what that might look like to save trees or replace trees or do some more landscaping. And then also, uh, one of the questions I had, um, was about how the streetlights will be back there and what lighting, what the plan for lighting will be. And I think that's all I have for right this minute.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Uh, Mr. Green, I'm not sure if you answered this question or not. I noticed that someone asked about stormwater runoff.
Yes, ma'am. Um, in, in speaking with Mr. Latimer, I believe it was on Wednesday, uh, they are looking at doing underground detention, which would be in the parking area. Basically, the water runoff stored in, uh, large pipes and of being released at, you know, whatever rate that the civil engineer would determine.
Okay. I thought I heard you answer it with a septic also. Do we have any idea what the price point will be for these, um, units?
Uh, we discussed that also on Wednesday. Uh, I wrote it down, but I did not bring it with me. I think that the two-bedroom unit was somewhere between 14 and 1600. Three-bedroom unit was 17 to 18, and then a four-bedroom unit was a little more than that. I will confirm that with Mr. Latimer.
Thanks.
And Ms. Wilson, I would note that the current project that's out there is going to be under a different stormwater requirement than the new phase would be in.
Okay.
The city has updated its stormwater requirements and green infrastructure requirements along with changes to the state law. So they will be under more stormwater requirements than developments would have been a decade ago.
Okay, thanks.
Is it possible to pull the, um, site plan back up, the colored one? Thank you.
Ms. Green?
Mr. Green, do you know if any of the units will be ADA compliant?
Not runoff, but I will certainly check and see.
And would you check if there's a state law that in, uh, rental development, if uni- any units or a certain percentage have to be ADA compliant? Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Green, would you just, because it keeps coming up, um, the sewer and the stormwater, could you remind everybody where the current retention pond is? Um, talk about why the problems that happened in the past shouldn't happen again? And then talk about where the underground detention will go now and what the topography is and why the stormwater should go down towards where that tree line is?
Well, I believe that the existing detention pond is just behind the two units on the upper left. The proposed detention would be in the paved area, which is kind of referred to as Phase Two. That area there, when I've driven through there is fairly flat. There will be some grading required, of, of course, to get it, uh, a pad ready. And the water will discharge into the creek back there.
Thank you.
Ms. Tullman?
I have three questions, Mr. Green, uh, actually, a couple of comments. On Marietta Circle, when you en- enter from Marietta Road and you kind of come to a, an end where you have to make a right, when you make a right and go up that hill, as you're traversing up the hill, there's a large dead tree on the right-hand side. Um, I understand that's been there for a while and I would just like to have that addressed publicly. I think I know what the answer is, but, uh, if we could get that answer, that would be helpful. The other thing is there is a steel plate on Marietta The other thing is there is a steel plate on Marietta Circle. And again, I believe I know the answer to that one, but would like to get public clarification as to what the plan is relative to removing that steel plate and replacing it with asphalt. And then the third thing is Ms. Castile did mention that they are, I think she said, and I'm paraphrasing, something to the effect that they're going to have similar finishes on the inside. I would like to know or have it publicly brought up what those finishes are typically like in a Latimer apartment LLC property. I think I heard that they are typically stainless steel appliances, luxury vinyl flooring, and granite countertops. Would love to get clarification on that.
In regards to the steel plate, that was put in place when Mr. Latimer had to do a sewer connection. And that was a place there until he gets an opportunity to re-asphalt or take care of the street cut there. And I believe he has mentioned a couple of times that he will take care of that ASAP.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Green.
Forward to our third and final public hearing. It's a public hearing and discussion of amendment to the city's plant palette and approved trees in the overlay zone, community standard ordinance, and unified development code, Table 103-11, as recommended by HGO R. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good to see you again.
Long time no see.
As you're aware, back in February of this year, the city contracted with HGO R, Hughes, Goodall, Leary, and Ryan, to do a study on the city's plant palette for the overall city, on the recommended trees in our overlay zone district, and a study of the Etowah River corridor. It has been suggested that the city adopt HGO R's recommendations for changes to both the city's overall plant palette and the suggested trees in the overlay zone. They have come up with some significant changes. I believe you have been given the copy of both, well, actually, you saw the presentation for the overlay zone. There was a little bit of delay in getting the recommended tree changes from HGO R, but those come in, I believe, the first part of this week. And Mr. Peppers has forwarded those to you. This can obviously is a public hearing. We can have public input on it. And if you want to take action on it, at your pleasure, we'll do that. I will get an ordinance written up to be voted upon and signed at the council's pleasure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. At this point, we will open up the public hearing. Did have one citizen sign up to speak, Mr. Roy Taylor.
Good evening, Roy Taylor, 360 East Marietta Street. I am coming up to speak this evening to ask the council to slow down just a bit. This is a long worked-on project. A month ago, we had a fabulous presentation by HGO R about what was going to be done and what they had in mind. I was hoping by now that there would be a full report that would reflect what was presented. And that has not happened yet. When I knew that this was being talked about last month, I started asking about, had anybody seen the planting list? And it took until, for me, until today. But that had to do with a computer glitch that didn't allow me to print what was sent over yesterday. So I suspect that none of you have had a chance to give any in-depth look at this, at the tree list that's being presented here. And I don't have anything objecting particularly to all of the red-marked trees, which I think are good suggestions to remove them from our list. But one of the things that happened during the presentation was that he explained that there was a series of cultivars in different varieties of trees that they were going to be recommending to be a part of the tree list. And when we've gotten this list, they are not a part of it. This is only an amended list of what we already have. So that's, one of the things that was created this past year was the Kansas Sustainability Board. And they have been asking for this tree list. And soon as, you know, we knew that they were working on it last February and we heard about some of the presentations of the stuff that they're working on around the area of the reservoir. And so we knew that they were working on it and it's been, you know, like I said, we don't have the full list as described a month ago. We don't have the backup report that would go with that list as to why these are good. And we have not had a chance, I'm speaking about the board, the Sustainability Board, to have had a chance to look at this. And it seems that that would have been a way that the city council, who created this board, to be using that board. And if we're not using that board as a, you know, a sounding tool for, to be able to advise council, then it weakens the basic reason to have that board in place. So those are my concerns. And I am hoping that you do not need to take action on this in two weeks, which seems to be where it is on the schedule. And that you would give a chance to the Sustainability Board to look at what's been presented and be able to give a report back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this point, we will close the public hearing and open up for council discussion. Any questions for Mr. Green? Again, we had the report from HGO R. Having the public hearing is part of, you know, changing any ordinances. I mean, from my perspective, I don't know that there's any, like, you know, pending deadline is really driving this as far as any immediate decisions. We have changed the makeup of our boards and commissions to get public input. And that's just my personal two cents. But again, we're doing this for a reason, but.
Mr. Carl?
I think, Mr. Green, you mentioned you're going to, you'll get some input here tonight. And then your goal is to put together an ordinance that we will be discussing at some time in the future.
Yes, sir.
Procedurally, I hear Mr. Taylor's concern. And I think it's an excellent thing for the Sustainability Group to have some input on, especially since we did just get some of the updated information just this week. Procedurally, I would think, instead of bringing just a report to Sustainability and say, here is, here is a report, what do you think? That actually having an ordinance to work from is probably not a bad idea. Is that something that, is there, my question is, is there anything in the pipeline or anything you see coming up in the next month, two months? Something until Sustainability, until you could get an ordinance drafted and Sustainability have an opportunity to talk about it? Is there anything coming up that needs this attention right now?
No, sir. There's, there's no imminent need to change it.
You weren't about to plant a bunch of nandina anywhere?
No, sir.
Okay, good man.
How the study was made, I think that the city would like to take advantage of it. There's not anything procedurally that I'm aware of that would require this to come back before the council in two weeks. I certainly would be happy to provide the Sustainability Committee with a copy of the reports once we can get them from HGO R, let them study it, provide their input to the choices and how HGO R arrived at their decisions. And this can be placed on a, on a future city council agenda.
I don't think, I'd love to see the ordinance when it comes up. I know if it comes up, we can always punt it out if need be. But I think it's good to see it and let Sustainability see it before we come in. If that makes sense to you.
It does. My first thought on the ordinance is that it would be a very simple one.
Sure.
It would just be talking about deleting section so-and-so and replacing it with section so-and-so with the comments as made by the Sustainability Committee in HGO R.
So you'd have the source document and then basically you say, we're taking this piece out and then we're referencing that piece to put in?
Yes, sir. We're just replacing one with the other.
Sounds like two good things to have hand in hand. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Yes, sir.
I might add, I mean, we did hire HGO R to, you know, professionals to study this. And if they did red-line trees that we had in our ordinance that are bad and we all agree they're bad, I would suggest we go ahead and, you know, amend that ordinance to remove those immediately until we craft a new ordinance. I mean, if we're not, I mean, if we have them in our development standards, I mean, we can go ahead and remove those while we're working on the new ordinance. I would just suggest that if we, I mean, but, yeah. I don't, I don't know if it triggers, I mean, we're having the hearing for this tonight, but.
Ms. Schmidt?
My mother-in-law is a master gardener and considers herself to be an arborist. And yet, we didn't hire her. We hired HGO R. So I just want to make sure that as we're having these discussions, it's clear to Mayor and Council and anyone else whose input we're getting, what their expertise is, how they do what they do, why they do what they do, and why we chose them specifically to work on this project. I just, like, that's what, that's what we do when we do the master transportation plan, the master arts plan. We're asking the experts because we know that we aren't the experts. So I just want to make sure that anyone who's part of these conversations understands who HGO R is and why we selected them and how they do what they do.
Mr. Green, I did want you to know that the Sustainability Board has had on their agenda a few times a new tree ordinance. And I just wanted you to be aware of that. At some point, they would need to communicate with you while they're talking about it. Just heads up.
Additional comments?
Thank you, Mr. Green. So we'll now move into our, the business portion of our meeting. You have in your packet two sets of minutes, draft minutes. One from our retreat from November 11th through the 13th. Another set of minutes for our meeting on November 17th. Any changes, revisions, edits, or motions?
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. A few informational items this evening. These are for information only. The first two are tech reports. Item A, information only. Cases ANNX 2210-006 and RZON 2211-002 and CUP 2211-007. Annexation rezoning and conditional use permit request for 14.36 acres located at 620 Prominence Point Parkway for the construction of 114-unit townhome development. Mr. Green?
Mr. Green, would you like to tag in a friend? Can we get you some water?
These next two are fairly simple since they're just informational items. But as the mayor said, this is an annexation, rezoning, conditional use permit request on a little over 14 acres, properties located at 620 Prominence Point Parkway. If you're not familiar with that, as you're going down the parkway, just past the childcare center on the right, if the property is located, they are looking to put in a 114-town home unit development. This will be transmitted to the county as required for annexation of property. And this should come before you in January as a public hearing.
And item B, for information only. Cases ANNX 2211-004, RZON 2211-006, CUP 2211-005, and MP 2211-008. Annexation, rezoning, conditional use permit, and master plan request for 20.01 acres located at 187 and 295 Gale Avenue, 191, 211, and 214 Putnam Drive for the construction of a residential development.
Mayor, members of council, as was stated, this is all four types of requests. Annexation, rezoning, conditional use permit, and a master plan. The master plan is required due to the zoning type that the applicant is asking for, which is a planned development project. This project on the site plan is shown to contain single-family homes detached, duplexes, quadplex, and two apartment unit buildings. Again, this information will be transmitted to the Cherokee County officials for their comments on it. This one also will come before you in January.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Again, those two items are for information only for upcoming cases. And those were two cases that were applied for prior to the issuance of the BS. So before we get any emails or calls, just wanted to give that information only, so. And then item C, you have in your packet the October financials for your information. Any questions tonight from Mr. Ingram? I have one announcement this evening. I would like to wish Councilor Schmidt a very happy birthday. Today is her birthday, so we appreciate her celebrating that with us tonight, so.
There's no place I'd rather be.
Any other important announcements tonight? Okay. We had no one sign up for a 10-minute public input, so we'll move right into old business. Item A, discussion and possible action on cases ANNX 2209-004 and RZON 2209-005, request to annex and rezone 2.38 acres located at the end of Roland Drive for the purpose of inventory storage. Mr. Green, welcome back, long time no see.
Thank you. I didn't mean to monopolize the night's meeting, but. Of course, ma'am. As the mayor stated, this is a case for an annexation and a rezoning for a Cherokee Toyota. This was on the last council's agenda. And the applicant requested a deferral to give them an opportunity to speak with three budding property owners in hopes to obtain their support for a 10-foot buffer and a screening fence. Assuming that they did not have any luck in obtaining that approval or that endorsement, they have revised their site plan, which now incorporates the 35-foot buffer as requested by the county and the screening fence. In your packets, there were some recommendations that was provided by the staff. One included the 35-foot buffer, the screening fence, a lighting on the property. They were also asking for the parking spaces to be nine feet wide as opposed to 10. Staff has no opposition to that since this is simply a storage area. And we are recommending approval of this request. And I'll apologize, I did not bring the folder up. And I think there was four conditions that should be in the staff report that you have in front of you.
Mr. Green? Questions, comment, discussion? Mr. Water?
Mr. Green, question. Did we ever get clarification on if the inventory that's being kept in other spots? Would that rectify the situation by having this parking, these parking lots?
I believe that the applicant, you know, has stated that this will provide sufficient area to park the inventory and not have to utilize or not have any display along Liberty Boulevard.
Did, and last question, did we, and forgive me, I've got tons of emails here, but are these, is this inventory just for this dealership?
Yes. Well, that's what the applicant stated at the last meeting, that it was solely for Cherokee Toyota.
Mr. Garland?
Because the, the meeting with the adjacent property owners for the smaller buffer didn't go terribly well. Is there any input from any of the adjacent property owners regarding the thirty-five-foot buffer? That's still smaller than what we would normally have. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, normally when it, if the property was to be annexed and it would have but unincorporated Cherokee County, our standard buffer is fifty feet from the city side. I did speak with one of the property owners, and she was opposed to the ten-foot buffer. She did not have an, any problem with the thirty-five-foot buffer.
Thank you, sir. And there was, that was the only property owner that was opposed, adjacent property owner was only posed, there was only one, and she was opposed to the ten-foot buffer, correct?
She was the only one.
And she's okay with thirty-five?
That I spoke with.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah, is it okay with you if I just go over these?
Yes.
Uh, number one, the applicant shall provide a thirty-five-foot densely planted buffer adjacent to residentially zoned properties. A board screening fence shall be erected along the inside of the thirty-five-foot buffer. The decorative side, um, shall face outward toward the adjacent properties. If the applicant provides proof or evidence that the adjacent property owners have no objection to the request of buffer reduction. Okay, not that part, the thirty-five-foot part. Lighting for the parking area shall be downcast and shall not bleed over to adjacent properties. The type lighting used shall be, um, twenty-seven-hundred Kelvin Kelvin or less LED bulbs or high-pressure sodium bulbs. Number three, there shall be no display and/or parking of vehicles along Liberty Boulevard. Number four, recompense shall be for the number of trees not planted, twelve, due to the elimination of parking lot landscape violence.
Anything further? Ms. Wilson?
If we're ready for a motion, I'll be happy to make that motion.
Sure.
Make a motion that we approve the request to annex and rezone two-point-three-eight acres located at the end of Roland Drive for the purpose of inventory stor- storage with the addition of the four conditions that were just read.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hall and favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We'll move forward to new business now. Item A, discussion and possible action on Glock seventeen disposal. Chief Mayorfield, welcome. Thank you for giving us a break.
Yeah, still evening. Good evening, mayor and council. As we spoke, uh, beginning a month ago, we, we started transitioning from our Glock seventeen nine-millimeters to the Glock forty-five nine-millimeter with the new R M R optic sights on the weapons. We finished our transition Tuesday night with everyone qualifying, and I just did the, got the report in right, right before I came over here, and our average score went up fifteen points with the new weapon and the, uh, new sights. And again, we made that transition because of the, uh, the, the usual wear and tear on the Glock seventeens that we get throughout training over the years, and also to create a safer environment for our officers and our citizens. So that went very well, and, uh, so now we, we have the Glock seventeens, our former primary, uh, weapons. And we have a few options of what to do with that. We could, we could actually sell that back to the manufacturers who would then sell them. We could auction them. We could sell them back to our officers, or we could gift them to our officers. And I would like to ask that we, we allow our officers to keep those weapons. I think that would be a very generous move by the council and mayor, not that, not that we haven't already seen your generosity throughout the year with our, with our pay and with the Christmas bonuses that we just received. But I think this would be very special to the officers. And as I said in the memo, uh, our officers have served as first responders throughout the pandemic and, uh, also have worked this year very short-handed as a result of the, the nationwide shortage of law enforcement and, and people that want to go into law enforcement. I also think this would serve as a great incentive for recruiting to, and retention, to, to see, for potential applicants to see the, the support that we get and, and the, the things that we get from our council and mayor. So I would, I would ask for that.
Thank you, chief. I know we discussed this summit, our retreat, and, um, again, I know recruiting, we've discussed this many times as an issue and, and, and pay and, and, uh, so I think it is, you know, a nice incentive. I guess my personal thoughts on it too is that keeping those weapons inside our city with people who are trained to know how to operate them safely is, is somewhat of a motivation for me, but, uh, that's just a thought that I had. But, uh, anyway, pause discussions, questions for chief? Mr. Waterman?
Do you, uh, think that it's a, it does lend itself to, um, the retention of, you know, keeping officers and, and as well as recruiting? And like the mayor just said, um, keeping the, the weapons sort of like in the family, you know, um. I'm sure if there's no other comments, um, I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve gifting the officers, uh, the Glock seventeens.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, mayor and council.
You're welcome. We appreciate our officers. Item B, discussion and possible action on special event pay rate change. Chief?
So, um, I'm sorry, I just, that was, that's very generous, mayor and council. Thank you so much. So throughout the year, our officers work, uh, different events. The individuals and organizations come into the city, and they have events, weddings, uh, movie shoots where they, they require officers, uh, private security to do that. So for, since twenty-fifteen, our officers have, uh, that has been a charge of forty-five dollars an hour. Forty-two dollars an hour goes to the officer, and then three dollars the city uses for administration, uh, administrative fees. So what we are seeing now, of course, that's, it's been that rate since twenty-fifteen, and there's nothing that I know of that, that's the same today as it was in twenty-fifteen as far as cost goes. And those costs are going up, and, uh, we're, we're seeing other agencies around us that are making anywhere from fifty-five to sixty-five dollars an hour. And now some of those agencies are getting seventy-five dollars an hour to work these part-time inside our city. And, uh, so as I, as I've said, it, it's a great, uh, tool for us because these events would require security. We would have to somehow give them security when they come into our parks and when they have these movie shoots. And that would sp- would put a strain on us manpower-wise to be able to do that. And it also would be the citizens having to kind of pick up the bill for security for, for private events. So I, I think it's very beneficial that we keep our officers doing this as a, as a secondary job. And it also goes to recruiting and retention because if potential applicants know these departments make these fees when they work special events and your department makes this fee, that could be a deciding factor on recruitment and retention. So I'm asking that, uh, we raise that to sixty-five dollars an hour for our officers, which would be, uh, sixty-two dollars an hour for the officers and three dollars for the administrative fees.
Thank you, chief. And just for clarification, this is, we, we charge these private organizations, they pay, they pay that rate, right?
Yes, sir.
Then we, then we pay the citizens, so it's not like.
We, we, the city pays the officers and then the, the.
But we're charging that to the outside people, so it's not like we're, we're increasing costs.
Before the event even occurs. Unless it's a, a longstanding event, then, then they'll pay us after the event.
Yeah, correct. Okay.
I do, I do want to make one note too, that the request is for sixty-five dollars an hour for city staff participating in the special events. So it wouldn't just be police officers, it would be public works or any city staff that are associated with that particular event.
Yes, sir. And that, and that, of course, that's when we do the parks and stuff, that usually when we do the, the wedding venues, the, the road races. Although sometimes the road races do require city staff to help with blocking the road.
So that would include our, um, public works and, and all the people that work very hard at these events. I know with weekends and, and evenings and, which I think is, is great, so thank you. Ms. Schmidt? Mr. Feller?
Um, Mr. Peppers, um, I just thought about this, so apologies for not having mentioned it before. Do you know if there are any organizations that utilize the services that chief is talking about that would view this as undue burden and might otherwise either have their event somewhere else or not have the event at all based on this rate increase?
You know, we, we've talked about redoing our special event policy in general, and I know we're working on that. Most of the event organizers we work with understand there is a cost for specific services. We get to determine somewhat what those services are based on the information that they give us. You know, if somebody wants an event, a park, and they think they're going to have two thousand people, they're probably going to have a different level of service from the city staff than they would if they were having, you know, a five K with fifty runners on a trail in a park. And so, um, what it does for us is it makes it easier for us to assure that it will be city of Canton staff who are supporting that particular event. Uh, and as I've mentioned to the chief, you know, it's important to me, and I think it's important to the council as well, that when events are on public property, we're providing that service. Uh, and that should be our first priority. When it relates to private security on private property, we're happy to help for a fee, but that's not our first priority. That is an added duty. Uh, and, and technically on private property, it could be provided by a number of different, uh, security personnel or, or other, uh, workers. But as it relates to events in parks, you know, this is, this is on par with what others are doing. They would face this fee anywhere.
Thank you. Totally supportive, by the way.
Schmidt?
Um, I move to approve the request to raise special event pay for employees as outlined in the memo, special event pay increase.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Two for two, chief.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you. Item C, discussion to amend utility services contract to include the removal of water tanks on East Main Street and Brown Industrial Boulevard. Mr. Hatabian?
Thank you. Um, utility services has been doing maintenance on our water tanks since two thousand and twelve, uh, which includes, uh, washouts, painting, and, and, and just general maintenance on them. And one of the services that they do provide is, is demolition. We've got three tanks on East Main Street that haven't been in use as long as I've been here, which is a little over twelve years. And also a tank on, uh, Brown Industrial Boulevard that's, that's we're not using as well. So, uh, we've got proposals from, to, to take them down. I think the ones on East Main were forty-seven thousand and change, and the other one on, uh, Brown Industrial was thirty-seven-nine. And they could get started, well, this is just discussion anyway, so, but they could get started, um, after the first of the year. So that's, that's pretty much it.
Now those tanks have been there for a while.
I want to say since, I think, I think they were constructed, uh, in sixty-one on East Main and around the same time on the, on Brown Industrial.
Questions? Yep. Any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you. Item D, discussion and possible actions on Atkins Task Order Twenty-Six for Riverstone Parkway mid-block crossing design and construction services for the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Miss, Mr. Peppers?
Miss Watson is not here tonight. She is supporting one of her children in a play. And so, uh, and so I told her I'd fill in for. This particular project came up, um, as part of, um, a case that came before council for rezoning where, uh, council was concerned about some of the pedestrian flow on Riverstone. Uh, we did reach out to, uh, a- as we have for a number of years, we've reached out to Georgia D O T and said, look, you know, we continue to have issues in the area. And they basically said to us, go get an engineer, get him to do a mid, mid-block analysis for pedestrian improvement. So we did that. Uh, Atkins came back with some, uh, design information, traffic information, and concepts. Uh, and we've been asked to move forward with Atkins doing full design. So this is in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-nine-fifty. That's for the design work. That's also for construction services. They would be in charge of the bid documents and the management of that particular project. I will tell you that in this particular case, the city's first course of action is going to be to request that this be considered, uh, as part of a G dot quick response project. That would mean G dot would pay the full cost of the project. We would only be out the cost of the fund. Those projects are normally completed in a three-year period. Uh, we do feel like we've got good data to support that project following under that fund. If for some reason it's not eligible for that fund or G dot's not going to approve it for that, we would then go after, um, H S I P funding, which is a funding source that they have that pays for the equipment. It does not pay for the installation or construction. So it would pay for the beacons and crossing signals and things like that, but we, we would be responsible for paying for the actual construction. If neither one of those sources work, it would be our recommendation to council that the city use S P L O S to pay for the project and get the project done. Uh, it will take, according to Atkins, uh, six to seven months for design and and then an additional eight months for bidding and construction. So it's going to be a year plus for the project. But as we get through the design phase, we would be working with G dot to see if we could utilize their funding sources. Miss Watson's asking for action on this, so we can go ahead and start with that work. I think you all know we continue to have issues with pedestrians in this corridor and pedestrian and vehicle conflicts.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we had another recent accident there, just recently, the last couple of days, so, but, uh, to me, I mean, if we can say two weeks, it's two weeks safer, so. It's an, uh, area that's been needing addressed for a long time, so. Questions, comments? Ms. Wilson?
Just yesterday, I was in that area twice, and both times there was somebody trying to cross the road where there wasn't a crosswalk. And if they're, you know, to, to get across the road, they would have to go, walk way down to the traffic light. We've been talking about this for a long time, so I'd like to take action on it tonight and make a motion that we approve for Atkins Task Order Twenty-Six to upgrade the mid-block crossing design and construction services in the amount of one-forty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Item E, discussion and possible action on the Ward of Task Order Three for the Transportation Improvement Project, Marietta Highway, Riverstone Parkway at Highway one-forty, Intersection Improvement Project Design Services to Michael Baker International in the amount of three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and ninety-two cents.
This is considered Phase One of the State Route one-forty project from Marietta Highway Riverstone, uh, through the city. Uh, we were approved initially by the Atlanta Regional Commission for federal funding for the design. Uh, as it related to this project, they have subsequently approved design, utility relocation, and construction funds for this. This allows, uh, Michael Baker International, who's our, uh, current engineer on the project, to move forward with the preliminary plan developments, the preliminary M S four or stormwater utility coordination, and limited environmental site assessments. Uh, we have submitted a concept report to G dot, which is the first big milestone on this project. And this project is currently on schedule for construction in January of two thousand and twenty-six.
Questions, comments? Motion?
I, I would, I would make one comment, um, just to remind the council. I, I would, I would make one comment, um, just to remind the council. Since this project has A R C funding, it's eighty percent funded by the federal government. Uh, twenty percent of the funding, uh, falls to the city, and of the twenty percent that falls to the city, thirty-four point two percent of that is impact fees. The remainder is SPOSS.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Award of Task Order Number Three for Transportation Improvement, Marietta Highway and Riverstone Parkway.
A second?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion. Item F, discussion and possible action on the Ward of Task Order Four for the Transportation Improvement Project Reinhardt College Parkway at Highway One-Forty Intersection Improvement Project Design Services to Michael Baker International in the amount of fifty-seven thousand six-hundred-and-twenty dollars and forty-three cents?
Uh, this project is related to the phase that's at Reinhardt College Parkway and State Route One-Forty. This, again, is a project that was approved for design, utility relocation, construction costs by the Atlanta Regional Commission. Just like the other project, it's eighty percent federal funding, twenty percent city funding, and then roughly a third of the city funding is impact fees. The other two-thirds is SPOSS. Uh, this task order consists of the MS Four and environmental preliminary tasks. The environmental survey and traffic work is ongoing. They're in the beginning stages of the concept report document, and this one is currently on schedule for construction in July of two thousand and twenty-six.
So in my lifetime.
We hope.
Questions, comments? Motion?
I'll make the motion, please, to award the Task Order Four for the Transportation Improvement Project Reinhardt College Parkway at Highway One-Forty Intersection, the Improvement Project Design Services to Michael Baker International in the amount of fifty-seven thousand six-hundred-and-twenty dollars and forty-three cents.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion.
And let me just say that Ward One enthusiastically thanks you all.
And let's mark this date down and see how long it takes to get that done, the whole thing. Like Sandy said, maybe not in our lifetime, but we're going to try.
Item G, discussion of redist- redist- redistricting council wards. Mr. Peppers?
So, Ms. Fortner, Mr. Dyer, and I have been working together on this. Elena, who works with us in, uh, from Interdev in GIS, has put together the map that's in your packet. Uh, this basically was a, a charge to, to her, uh, to help us reevaluate the balance of wards in the city. Uh, we do have an election that will come up next year, uh, and part of that requirement of the election is to run as a candidate in a ward, you have to have lived in the ward. And so we brought this map for you with the hope that you will look at it over the next two weeks. You would come back later this month with any comments that you have, and then we could place it on the calendar for adoption in January so that it would be approved along with a qualification packet that will handle the election for next November. Uh, because the city does not, uh, because everyone in the city has an opportunity to vote and the way our election system works, we are not required to have any reviews by the state of Georgia. We are allowed to do this by home rule. I will tell you that the current map is, as presented to you, um, does significantly increase the size of Ward Two. Uh, one of the things that we have asked in the map design is that, um, borders be considered, uh, along roadways, natural areas like rivers, uh, so that we don't split neighborhoods or we don't get any jagged areas. Ward Three is a little bit more like Swiss cheese on the map, just because of old annexations. Uh, Ward Two does pick up everything, uh, basically west of Five Seventy-Five, which is currently split. Uh, and Marietta Highway and, uh, Riverstone becomes a border, uh, for Wards Two and One. Uh, we will also be placing this out on the website and, uh, based on conversation at the next meeting, and we'll make sure that the public's aware of the changes so that they'll have an opportunity to come, public input, prior to the adoption in January.
So once this is adopted, this, again, would allow anyone that is in one of those new wards, if they wanted to qualify for the upcoming, the next election, they could qualify in that new ward, uh, to run by the qualifying period in August, so.
One of the unique things with the way the City of Canton operates is that all three wards have an election every two years. If you are a citizen of the city, as long as you've lived in the city for a year, you can run for council. You just don't know which ward it would be in, um, if the map has changed. But prior to qualification, the map would have been adopted and would give a six-month period prior to qualification to know which ward you lived in.
And the, the ward map has, I mean, we know there've been issues. I think Ward, Ward Two is ten percent of the population, but, as it hasn't been updated, and has it ever been updated, or hasn't been updated, and?
It's not been updated since probably the two thousand, since this was the last time it was probably updated.
I don't, and it, I'm not sure it was updated then, but it hasn't been updated in a long time, so. But anyway, so, anyway, we'll, everyone will look at that. I know we've discussed it before.
Confirm that, in looking at these lines, the highly successful new liquor store that just opened will now be in Ward Two, is that correct? It'll be taken from Ward Three.
Until Counselor Schmidt brings it up on December fifteenth.
You can't have islands in the wards, can you?
There's, look, it doesn't even make sense.
I feel a gerrymander coming on. Thank you for your hard work on this. This is excellent, something we talked about doing for a long time.
Definitely, definitely, so thanks to everyone involved, so.
Mayor, just a quick question from Mr. Peppers. Um, that qualifying date in August, when is that?
Yeah, it has not been set yet. It will be approved in January with that, with the packet, with the, um, qualifying fee. Yes. You have to adopt the fee schedule in January for qualifying, and that's when the dates will be set. Normally ours is a two-and-a-half day period.
Yes, and it's usually in the very middle of August, like fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
So if the new ward maps and the qualification involves that, it certainly makes sense to do it at the same time, so. Awesome. Mr. Peppers?
Uh, the only item I have tonight, um, under my report, um, one of the items that we had discussed at the retreat was getting some concept work done on the park in South Canton, the property down there. Um, we did reach out to, uh, Cherokee County Parks and Recreation to see specifically what groups they have worked with on projects. Uh, TSW, Tunnel Spangler Walsh, was one that they recommended. The city has worked with them prior on our LCI plan. They also did the, um, trail plan for Cherokee County. Uh, Scott Hooper and Adam Dodson met with them out on site, uh, and they proposed back to us a fee of, I think it was ninety-six hundred dollars to do a concept pa- plan for us with one revision. Uh, that does fall under my spending authority, so we're going to move forward on that, uh, as soon as we can get that document signed. Great news. All I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Questions for Mr. Peppers? Any council introduced items? I have nothing for you this evening, so I have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.